At the March 30th, 2020 Board Meeting, the West Yaga Board of Education approved a resolution to suspend portions of certain bylaws which were not consistent with board meetings by telephone conference or video conference. The second resolution was passed on December 14th, 2020, extending the board's ability to meet via electronic means until July 1st, 2021. This resolution ensures compliance with amended substitute House Bill 197 as extended by the passage of HB 404. At this time, the Board of Education will continue its meetings by telephone conference, video conference, or other similar technologies. This meeting is a meeting of the West Yaga Local School District Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the West Yaga Local School District's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please use the chatroom function located at the bottom of the webpage if you would be like, if you would like to be recognized for public participation. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rainey.
Here.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, welcome, Dan. Please rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's do this. Hate it how it goes into full screen mode. Okay, no program reports. Has anyone signed up for public remarks?
There is no information in the chatroom.
Chat, shall we approve the agenda?
Oh, yeah, let's approve the agenda.
Sorry.
I think it's a fine agenda.
May I make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second it.
All right, roll call, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Okay, now let's get on with our fine agenda. Routine items.
Resolution 217 to approve routine matters, the West Yaga Local Board of Education, to include the May 2021 financial statements and the June 14th minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Take it away, Karen.
All right, as we look at our May financial statements, you'll see a couple of things. The investment report will show $29,374,000 in investments. We have one more month left in the fiscal year. If we turn to operations for the general fund, you'll see that we have revenues in an amount of $37,400,000, $37,400,000, and expenses of $28,400,000 as well. We'll estimate that we'll have approximately another $300,000 in revenue for the end of the year, but then we'll have another $3 million in expenses as we wrap up the month of June, which is only a couple of days away. So we'll be well within our budgeted operations for this year. We look at our food services. This is an area that we've been focused on this year due to the free lunch program along with the expenditures we had in those programs. So you'll notice that there is a negative purchase services. So right now, we have collected $355,000 through our free lunch program plus the urine transfer of $50,000 that we did earlier this year. Our expenses are $323,000, but there is a negative amount there for purchase services. What I did was take $45,000 for our purchasers for the food services manager and move that to the Esser funds, which is under what the federal government is allowing us to do, particularly in programs such as our food services where we've lost a great deal of revenue and in athletics where we've lost it, where we didn't have any revenue as well. So they're allowing us to supplant those salaries in order to provide for, you know, keeping everyone employed in those, in those areas. So we'll end the year probably closer to between $87,000 and then we'll be able to start the year and pay for those summer salaries that we had in place. But that's only because we moved $50,000 into that area as well, and then I moved another $45,000 out of that area. So we'll be having, we'll have the same program going forward next year. Everyone will have the ability to have a free lunch program, but we will add the à la carte services. That's something we did not do this year, and we understand we can now add that to our programming. So that'll hopefully increase our revenue there in our food services. And that is the simple report. We'll have a longer report next month as we end the fiscal year.
Okay, any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson? Mr. Thorson?
I'm sorry, yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 218 to approve the warrants for the May 2021.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Levenworth?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution 219 to approve the fund-to-fund advance for the fiscal year 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
This is just an advance. This is for our federal funds. We have some encumbrances at the end of the year, and so once that, those expenses come in, we pay them, then we can be reimbursed, and then that'll go back to the general fund.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 220 to approve the final appropriations for fiscal year 2021 with the applicable increases and decreases in appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
This appropriations will finish out this fiscal year. We have $35,570,000 in appropriations. That's for all the funds that we have in our, under our operations.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey? Resolution 221 to approve the establishment of a new funds for fiscal year 2022.
So moved.
Second.
This is, used to be under miscellaneous federal funds, the 599 account. It's now, the auditors have established a permanent fund, 584, for Title IV funds.
So this is just strictly bookkeeping?
It is strictly bookkeeping.
Okay.
What they'll do is they have a type, they have a, they run it through miscellaneous funds until they know whether it's going to be a permanent fund, and now they'll assign a number to it. So that's what they've done.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Resolution 222 to approve the temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
This is the $40,410,000 appropriations. What we've got in there now are the Esser funds. Those are added to the, to our appropriations, so that's about $1,005,000. In addition to that, we've had increases over the year in the general fund, and then we also added the property disposal, and I've allocated some funds for that as well. So those are why there is a general increase in that appropriation.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 223 to approve the West Yaga High School course fees for the 2022 school year.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Just one, one brief, and this is more to the board. I think at some point, we ought to look at fees because fees are uneven across different courses and different levels, and it seems to me that that's something that maybe there's a case that for some classes, we're putting up certain roadblocks by having these uneven fees, that, you know, that, that having fees that are even across the board might make it easier for students to choose to participate in different areas. So it's a discussion for another time, but I wanted to throw it out there under this item, so thanks.
Roll call.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson? Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution 224 to approve West Yaga Middle School course fees for the 2022 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Who was second, I'm sorry?
I'll second it. Beers?
Oh, thank you.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson? Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 225 to approve West Yaga Elementary School course fees for the 2022 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
The, oh, school fees for the, I'm sorry, the school fees for the elementary courses will include their school supply list. So the $55, $65 fees will include all their supplies, so that is around between $25 and $30.
Okay.
Part of that fee.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
No, the nice thing about that now is that since we have all the, all the same grade in the schools, we don't have to deal with two buildings having two different sets of whatever materials.
That's a good point. I'd forgotten about that.
Which was an issue for many years.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Personnel resolutions. Resolution 226 is a resolution to create and abolish certain administrative positions and transfer certain administrative employees.
So moved.
Second. Where is this? I don't know that I've seen this before, Rich, was just, to make sure that, in your power to do so, I.
Yes, we've, we were very cautious to make sure that we had legal opinions in terms of the mechanisms by which to do this effectively. It's done in a way that does not in any way affect the continuity of employment of individuals, and it's within the parameters of the individual contracts of our administrators.
Okay.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Resolution 227 is to approve the employment of an administrative staff member, and after the board puts this resolution on the table, I'd like to introduce that person, also get a little rationale for what we're doing here.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Before the board votes, I'd like to make a reference to the last resolution. Due to increasing needs in certain elements of operations and technology in the district, we've made some administrative shifts. As a result of those shifts, there's been one position that was left unfilled, and that is that of the high school principal. Tonight, I'm pleased to recommend to the board the hiring of Ryan Patty. Ryan is an administrator who worked with me in my last district. He was an administrator whom I hired while I was the superintendent of that district. I've seen him work with students. I've seen him work with staff. I've seen him do so very effectively. It is probably a little-known fact that when you go through his, his educational pedigree, you'll, you'll find obviously his, his undergrad experience at the Ohio University, you'll find a master's degree, and you'll find him nearing the completion of a PhD program. But the piece that's probably not known to too many people is that he's also a West G graduate. He's a graduate of the class of 2002. I was aware of that when I hired him in Beechwood long before I ever knew that my path would take me to West Yaga. So in some ways, this is a homecoming for Ryan, and he is on camera tonight with his wife and with his, his children. So Ryan, you want to give a wave to the, to the Board of Education? There he is.
Oh, and Ryan's mom was a school board member.
Correct. You're in S.G.
I think I'm the only one who goes back far enough for that.
Almost do, Kathy.
Dr. Beers, I believe he thinks he graduated with your son, correct?
He did.
Okay.
Okay.
So you can tell me all the things about Ryan when he was in high school that I may not know.
I will find out this weekend.
I was gonna say, there's probably things Bill doesn't know.
True. I'm gonna leave that one, Chat.
Any other questions?
When does Ryan start?
He'll be starting August 1st, but his contract is one which, as we'll see in the next resolution, also approves 10 extended days for him to get a running start. And I'm sure that Jay will be very helpful to him during that time period as Jay moves to his new responsibilities. I know that he'll be helping Ryan to learn the ropes of high school. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
All right, congratulations, Ryan. Congratulations. Resolution 228 is to approve extended day contracts. This is for the 10 extended days that I had mentioned to you for Mr. Patty.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Katsowski?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next resolution also introduces you to several new staff members for the West Yaga Schools. I'd like to follow the same processes last, last time, and after the board puts this resolution on the table, I would like to have Jay and Amy introduce the board to some of the candidates we have to present tonight. So without further ado, resolution 229 is to approve certified staff appointments for the 2021-2022 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I don't know who wants to go first. I guess, Amy, why don't we let you go first, and then Jay?
Good evening. I'm delighted to introduce you to Gabrielle Gannon, who goes by Gabby. She was unable to join us this evening. She has another job, and they called her in unexpectedly. It is a pleasure to welcome her. We are her first teaching position, and she comes to us with a degree in general education and special education, so dual certifications, which is wonderful. She is clearly very diligent. She was on the dean's list for four straight years at the University of Mount Union, and she's working on a master's already and a reading endorsement. So we're delighted to welcome her. She'll be working with Megan over at Lindsay.
Very good. Mr. Bishop?
Good evening, everybody. Congratulations, Ryan, Mr. Patty. I also have some things I could share with the board as a former teacher of Ryan, that is, there are some, many good things that I could.
It's full of revelations tonight.
Well, good evening. We are presenting for your approval tonight, a new math teacher, Nicole Bress, who is joining us this evening. Nicole joins us from Willby South High School, where she taught for seven years. I know she also has experience teaching at the middle school level. Her experience in teaching at the high school includes Algebra I, AP Calc BC, Algebra II, and Algebra II honors courses. Prior to beginning her teaching experience, she graduated from John Carroll University with a bachelor's degree in teaching mathematics. And Nicole's currently pursuing her Master's of Arts degree in math from secondary, fourth secondary teacher from John Carroll University. While at Willby South, she was a member of the PBIS committee and served as the girls' varsity soccer coach. Nicole's contacts on and off her reference list all had great things to say about her, and if approved, welcome and congratulations. And we are also presenting tonight, Mr. Nathaniel Pritchettell, who is on camera also. As our new, as a new science teacher at West Yaga High School, if approved, Nathaniel joins our science department after receiving a Bachelor's of Science degree from the Ohio State University and a Master of Education degree in school-based education from John Carroll University. Is a graduate of Lake Catholic High School. Nathaniel began his teaching career during COVID, where he student taught and filled a long-term position for a teacher who was out on maternity leave. During his time at Willby, he taught AP Biology and Physical Science to students online and in the classroom. His student teaching brought him experience in AP and honors chemistry. He truly stood, stood out in the interview process, as Dr. Mark Ward and Dr. Benan Casa can attest. He's, as a bright young teacher like Nicole, his references all had outstanding things to say about him. So congratulations, Nathaniel, and we welcome you.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes. Welcome aboard.
Yes, congratulations. Echo that, congratulations. I'm incredibly pleased to have you folks join our staff, so congratulations. Resolution 230 is to approve a classified staff appointment for the 2021-2022 school year. This individual is also here, and I know Amy would like to introduce you to her once the resolution is off the table.
So moved.
Second.
Amy?
Sarah Hosa joins us from the Cleveland School District. She worked for the ESC of Northeast Ohio. We're very pleased to welcome her. She has a vast amount of experience with students with multiple challenges, and I think it's one of the first time that I've had someone that I know well reach out just as a connection, emphasizing how well she works with, with children. So we're delighted to welcome her to the high school. Sarah, welcome.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 231 is to approve certified stipends for work outside of the 2020-2021 contractual year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Resolution 232 is to approve 2021 summer opportunities stipend, i.e., summer school.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 233 is to approve summer routes and substitute drivers for the extended school year services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please. Sorry?
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution 234 is to approve the employment of a casual labor for the summer.
So moved.
Second.
That is, yeah, okay. I thought that was you. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 235 is to rescind the service contract for the 2020-2021 school year.
So moved. Second.
Want to explain it, Rich? My understanding was that this person just did not work for the current school year. Okay. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Was that me? Yes. I can't, can't hear you over the dog.
Ben, is that you?
I'm afraid so. I'm going to mute.
Okay. Why don't you just raise your hand when you're voting? Last I do a voice vote.
Not sure that's allowed.
Well, too bad.
Resolution 236 is to rescind the service contract for the 2021-2022 school year.
So moved.
Second. So is that the same reason?
Well, this person would not be working the upcoming school year for fall. Roll call, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Thorson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 237 is to approve a revised service contract for the 2020-2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution two thirty eight is to approve a service contract for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year.
So move.
Second. So this is the same person?
Yes.
Right here.
And what does EL stand for? It's English, English learner. So.
Okay.
Non-English, English language learners, the students who are learning English.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Lemonworth.
Yes.
Mr. Ramey.
Yes.
Mr. Thorson.
Yes.
Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Mr. Katuski.
Yes.
Resolution two thirty nine is to approve supplemental contracts for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ramey.
Yes.
Mr. Thorson.
Yes.
Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Katuski.
Yes.
Ms. Lemonworth.
Yes.
Resolution two forty is to approve a two point two five percent raise for central office confidential administrative assistance for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year.
So move.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Thorson.
Yes.
Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Mr. Katuski.
Yes.
Ms. Lemonworth.
Yes.
Mr. Ramey.
Yes. Resolution two forty one is to approve raises for non-exempt central office staff for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year.
So move.
Second.
Questions? Welcome. You wanted to have a question, Bill?
I was just going to point out, I think that, uh, Karen can correct me if I'm wrong, but these raises are more or less based on what, uh, the negotiated contract was with the teachers and also with the, uh, the OPC. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Mr. Katuski.
Yes.
Ms. Lemonworth.
Yes.
Mr. Ramey.
Yes.
Mr. Thorson.
Yes.
To segue with Dr. Beer's last comment, I'm pleased to present to the board tonight, resolution two forty two, which is a resolution to approve the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, number two fifty five in West Yaga Local Schools Terms of Agreement from July first, twenty twenty one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion.
Congratulations.
Yeah, this was a nice, nice work. Roll call.
Mr. Katuski.
Yes.
Ms. Lemonworth.
Yes.
Mr. Ramey.
Yes.
Mr. Thorson. Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Before we move to the next resolution, I just, I would like to say, as, as a member of, of the team who, who met with our OPC reps, I know I speak on behalf of Karen and any of the others who were on the team as well. Sean, I'm sure would echo this also. Um, we appreciated not only the, the, the process and the spirit with which, uh, the negotiations with OPC were conducted. So it was a, um, if negotiations can be pleasant, they were as pleasant, I think, as possible. So thank you very much. Anything else? Any other discussion?
Like Teresa's agreeing.
But I think, uh, just to let everybody know, a lot of work was done upfront, uh, to get ready for these negotiations. We do use a federal mediator that helps us keep on track and really works in a collaborative way. So I appreciate, uh, everyone who was on the team, um, and Teresa led that as well. So we thank her very much.
Thank you, and thank you to everybody who was a part of both teams, because it went really well. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
We did that.
We did?
Yes, we did.
Oh, okay.
All right, resolution two forty three to approve the addendum to the ESC of the Western Reserve align district service agreement with West Yaga Local Schools for ESY services for the twenty twenty one school year.
So move.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Ms. Lemonworth.
Yes.
Mr. Ramey.
Yes.
Mr. Thorson.
Yes.
Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Mr. Katuski.
Yes.
Resolution two forty four to approve the First Amendment to College Credit Agreement between Lakeland Community College and West Yaga Local School District.
So move.
Second.
We would, uh, the, um, the addendum deals with the rental of the textbooks. Before, we were paying thirty dollars per credit hour for rental of textbooks, and now we're, they reduced that down to fifteen. Now that's a significant savings to us. Last year, we spent thirty six thousand, five hundred and seventy five dollars on textbook rentals. And this year, we, uh, in the year before that, we spent forty thousand dollars. So this will be a significant savings for us.
Great. Other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ramey.
Yes.
Mr. Thorson.
Yes.
Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Mr. Katuski.
Ben, you're unmuted. Still muted.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution two forty five to approve a service agreement between educational alternatives and West Yaga Local Schools for the twenty twenty one school, twenty twenty two school year.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Thorson.
Yes.
Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Mr. Katuski.
Yes.
Ms. Lemonworth.
Yes.
Mr. Ramey.
Yes. Hey. You're up, Rich. Hey, well, I feel like I've done a lot of talking tonight, but as you can see, much of our time recently has been spent with staffing. Um, we've been interviewing individuals for these positions. We feel very, very pleased with the people we found. Right now, two of our, our biggest, uh, remaining openings to fill relate to the assistant principal at the high school and then also the athletic director at the high school. So, uh, several of us have been working with Nancy Benan Casa and Stacy Marata to line up these interviews and get everyone, uh, everyone, um, prepared. And, and we'll be having our, our first round for both, both positions, um, this week. On Tuesday and Wednesday, we'll be looking at those positions. Also, we have a host of summer projects, uh, in the works right now, as you can imagine, going around the, the, the school campus. Um, and we're looking forward to, uh, having things done and completed and ready for the opening of schools in August.
Hey, Rich, uh, for the athletic director, um, at position and assistant principal, is there a particular, um, calendar date crunch involved in that?
Yes, um, typically, typically, if a person wants to leave a district, if they're employed as a teacher, um, they're, they're granted the ability to leave, whenever that situation arises, because oftentimes administrative openings don't occur until late in the summer. But per the Ohio Revised Code, July tenth is the magic trigger date, where we try to get people on board, if we can, before July tenth, so that they, um, so that they're guaranteed the ability to exit their previous employment. So we will be, uh, moving quickly. I expect that we'll have these positions filled if all goes well, probably. I would guess not this week, but we'll do second round interviews the next week, and hopefully we'll have an answer and people to present to the board at that time.
So, uh, will we need to have a special board meeting to approve those, or will you?
It would, it would depend on, it would depend on the employment status of the people that we hire, actually, and, and what their employers believe. They need.
Potentially, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, I can only one time ever recall not permitting someone to leave, um, when that person requested to leave and, and making them stay because the July tenth deadline had passed. And that employee made me wish I had not done so many times during the ensuing year. So I learned my lesson.